The board has to join us to pledge the flag.
Oh dear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We appreciate your coming out and joining us this evening for our February meeting at Board of Supervisors. A few announcements. I would note first that immediately prior to this meeting, the board did meet in an executive session, and that was to discuss the possible purchase of land which would expand Miller Park. And just a few other general announcements. If you did not get agendas, they're on the table in back of you as you come into the door. Agendas are available there as long with the sign-in sheet. We would ask that you sign in before you leave this evening. Agenda for this meeting was posted on this building's entrance door, on the township website, and on the township's Facebook page. The meeting is live streaming on YouTube. A recording will be available through the township website, and it will be posted immediately on YouTube. Written minutes will also be available on the township website after they are approved by the board. There will be two opportunities for public comment. After being recognized by the chair, we'd ask that you step up to the podium, state your name and address, and speak strongly into the microphone. For those of you who may not have been in here before, restrooms, water fountains are outside the door to my left, and then another left and around the corner, or I guess a right after that, you would find restrooms and water fountains. With that, we'll do self-introduction of the board.
Dave Rose.
Jeff Rogers.
Art Rutledge.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Reynolds.
And to my left is Todd Ziegler, the Township Manager. We have excused our solicitor from tonight's meeting, and I think due to an illness in the family, we have excused our recording secretary, Wendy Brown. Okay, with that, we will go back to the agenda that you have in front of you. First item would be approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on January the 2nd.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Are there questions or comments regarding the minutes? Then I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 By votes to the affirmative, the minutes are approved. We have, I think, just for information, Todd, the final version of December's report is always preliminary in case there are year-end things, but it is unchanged.
There's no changes from what you approved on March.
Right, and we previously approved that, so we do not need to approve that again, right?
Correct.
And you have the treasurer's report for the month of January. Are there any questions or comments regarding that report? Anything, Todd, you want to pass on?
Nothing in particular now.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
By votes to the affirmative, we have approved the treasurer's report. You also have in front of you a actual versus budget report for all of last year, for information only. For those who've joined us tonight, it kind of runs like we would expect it to. We typically try to vote, or try to establish a budget that's lower on the income side, higher on the expense side. So as we would expect, we have run about, I guess, thirteen percent greater than our budget for what was budgeted for income, and about five percent under for expenses. Anything else you want to comment? Questions from anybody? No surprises, and pretty much aligned with what we had anticipated when we budgeted. Okay, with that, we have our first opportunity for public comment. There are those who would like to address the board at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Powers, and I live at 623 East Dollar Road. My wife wanted to be here to present this, because she's a little better than I am, but she's, she works at a service center, she couldn't make it, so...
If you could do a little closer to the microphone, I know you're, it's pretty short for you, it would help us.
So, like I said, she wanted to be here, but she sent me, but this is what she has written. "I am saddened and disheartened to be again in regards to the continuing matter of Shrewsbury Township residents not having any rights to EDUs. As you will recall, we were in attendance at the 9/6 meeting over the same exact issue. We as property owners in the Shrewsbury Township area who have land which can be developed and would like to do that for many reasons are unable to because what stands between us and completing that, that is the unwillingness of Shrewsbury Borough to be a fair and reasonable. Back in September, we were told that you, the township, are working on our issues and understanding where we are coming from. Do you really understand? Here, sorry about that, do you really... We are five, here we are five months later, and I asked you, what progress has been made? From my perspective as a property owner, the answer is none. The township wants to continue to play nice. The Shrewsbury Borough, I don't, play nice with the Shrewsbury Borough. I don't understand you to continue to bring knives to a gunfight, and don't understand how you plan to make headway or smooth things out over the borough. The borough continues to govern and carry out their corrupt ways. Why have we as township property owners paid more than a borough property owners towards the sewer plant upgrade, yet continues to be told and denied EDUs? Many different documents and studies have shown that there are EDUs available and will be available, especially with the plant upgrade, yet the concrete evidence and proof have fallen on deaf ears. We continue to be treated like second-class citizens. We have no rights or value in the eyes of the borough. My wife and I were recently part of a Sky King debacle. There are EDUs that the owner wanted to sell to us. Mysteriously, no one can verify ownership of the EDUs, and now according to Cindy Bosley of the borough, if the owner wants to sell these EDUs, they go back to the borough again. A township resident shafted and denied EDUs. So why do you think that we will be allowed to use any ID EDUs with a return for the current payback letter? Why are you so delusional to think the borough is going to be fair, reasonable, and fair reasonable when they haven't shown or displayed that in the past several years we have been involved with them? If I come across as being harsh and abrupt, it's because we are sick and tired of this game. For some of the group, this has put an incredible financial strain and burden on them and their families. It has prevented, and is preventing some from retirements. It has caused financial strain on all of us in one way or another. I realize that perhaps this issue is not important to you because it doesn't personally affect you or your families. However, as elected officials, it is as your duty to act and support those within the township. As previously stated in the email to you from Phil Robertson, we are asking you to engage Chris Vetter and hold the borough accountable for their actions. It is, if this issue cannot be resolved, or the township is unwilling to help us resolve it, we as a group will be reaching out to Kristen Phillips, our, excuse me, state senator, or we will go DEP, PUC, and possibly even have the FBI Public Corruption Program investigate this continuing heinous crime against us and the township. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before I address that, are there others here who want to speak to the same thing? Okay.
Hi. I'm Linda Puzzo, 16756 Mount Erie Road in Shrewsbury. And again, I was here at the previous meeting.
Sure, remember that.
I email you all the time about this issue. And here's, here's what I'd like to add and, and ask you. I went through all the minutes for the last year. There's been one meeting of the sewer committee. In July 7/12, a letter was sent by the, by the township supervisors to the other municipalities about the EDUs. I have no record of whether you received a response, what the response was. Right now, the only thing that I have seen in writing is the work that Phil Robinson engaged Chris Vetter to do, documentation about the Grace Church EDUs and the new billing of EDUs and what the available EDUs are. If we as a group plan to go forward, we have nothing in writing, no documentation of any conversations that you've had with the sewer authority, and so where does that leave us? You know, somebody says, "Oh, I talked to Cindy Bosley, and she said these belong to the borough." Well, you know, that's hearsay. What I would humbly ask you guys to do is hold a meeting of the sewer committee within the next two weeks, come up with a plan, whether it's Chris Vetter, whether it's other, some other engagement, but send a letter to the borough and request a written response by a certain time. Because, you know, I know you as the supervisors care about revenue. Not only are you losing the revenue from additional property taxes, are these to be developed, but on an even greater standpoint, you're losing the income tax on the people who will be buying those properties. I understand that of the local municipalities, we are probably in a better financial position than the others. But that financial position can be a heck of a lot better if, you know, the EDUs are granted. I mean, what Phil, I believe the number off the top of my head for all of us here is ninety-five EDUs within the next two years. We know that those EDUs are sitting there, and we also know that the sewer has additional capacity. We've looked at whatever that sewer report is, the something ninety-four. I mean, we've looked at that. We've read all that stuff. It's, it's kind of, for anybody who analyzes the existing data, there really is no reason that the borough should be holding you guys hostage. But I think in order for us to move forward, we really need written communication and, and a request for a written response. So that's what I'd like, I'd like to see you guys have the sewer committee get together, prepare something to go forward with, and then do it. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? All right, let me, a lot of things have came up, but let me try to address some of those, and Todd can join me as well. You talk about the capital money for the plant upgrade. Just so we understand, that upgrade is not going to increase capacity as far as, Phil, as far as the borough is concerned. It's needed to make sure they can handle what chemicals are in, what is being put into those streams and so forth today. There have been a number of conver, this, you're looking at a problem that's thirty or to forty years in the making. We aren't going to solve that in five or six months. There's been a lot of effort, and Phil knows about some of it, but probably not all of it, probably weekly or, or better with comments and conversations back and forth with the borough. We do not think at this time that any legal action is going to make things happen quicker. It probably would turn it backwards. You know, we've sent the letters out about the capital cost that we hope might have some people sell unused capacity EDUs, and I think you're right. I don't think we'll see any comeback from the township. Now, we're interested to see how many come back from the borough, and if they get enough back, is that some additional that might let them supply? The only way that there are going to be any quick EDUs come out of this is if the borough will give up EDUs they have now. There's nothing else that's going to make that happen quickly. So we did put a plan into effect. We said, we got the borough, that was a mutual decision to say, "Well, let's try to find out if there are things out there that people aren't using," because that's one quick way to get them. So a letter went out. People have until the end of March to respond to that letter. I don't know what kind of response we'll get, but the plan was that we would put that in place, so I think we have to let that happen in all fairness. We've had conversations with the borough, and they have had, I'd say, some positive reaction about a real regional sewer authority, because long-term, that's what we really should have in place. It's a shame that wasn't done many years ago, but, but it wasn't. So, and that would give the township representation and a voice in what happened, things, and it is the borough plus the borough authority. There are two groups that we're dealing with. The sewer committee has met when it felt it made sense to meet, but because the group is not meeting doesn't mean that things aren't being done. Todd has had a number of meetings with the township or the borough. I've had some. That seems to be the best way to try to make something happen. I think, you know, I don't think you're going to see anything from state reps. We've talked about the DEP. We've talked about some things that might get them involved, especially if we recommend onsite sewage, because you are allowed to develop, and you are allowed to put in onsite septic systems if the sewer is not available to you. We don't think the DEP would like to see that happen, and that might be one way to pursue that. We don't think they'd like to see a lot of sewer septic systems going in where you're in the well zone area. So there are some things that we think, you know, can get the borough involved. Todd, have I?
Yeah, the only other thing I think I would add is recently, there were nineteen EDUs that went back to Shrewsbury Borough, and the township did send a letter to them. Phil was part of putting together a list and what we project for each, I forget how many years we went out, fifteen years or what have you, but for the next five years, I think that ninety-five or a hundred, ninety-five is the number. But anyway, they have those nineteen EDUs that they just received recently. They indicated that they don't have a need for them. So we sent a letter to them and said, "These are the projects that we identified for twenty-four and twenty-five that are in need of EDUs." And we asked them to give consideration to transferring those over to the sewer authority, and asking the sewer authority then to assign them to those projects that we identified. And the projects we identified are plans that are either on the table or have been on the table but had to be withdrawn because of not having capacity. And I, the only other thing I will add, when it comes to litigation, I don't know how many of you have been through it, but I can tell you here from township, if we get to that point, you're not going to see EDUs for many, many, many years, I don't believe. And the reason I say that, give an example, something very simple such as a zoning permit, we were in court for five years. And another matter with the subdivision plant, literally five years before we even got any decision. So our hope is to avoid having to go to court. And I know things are not moving as fast as people want, but, and it's very slow, but it is positive.
Yeah, I would think there's, we certainly recognize the need for people to have EDUs, and this board recognizes it has to try to make that happen. The board hopefully has a lot more information than you all do, and that changes every day. But I don't think a week goes by that there aren't communications, something goes back and forth. A lot of it is verbal. People are changing on the borough, and that's, that's a good sign, because part of that's embedded in some of the people that were there. But it's a problem, it was a long time in the making. It's not going to, and as Todd said, we see positive progress. And does that mean there will be EDUs tomorrow? No, I don't think so. Maybe some this year? I think there's some possibility for that. I think we'll wrap our hands around that and a lot more in, when we see what comes back. We get a response to the borough about the nineteen, we will have a much better idea where they're going, and then I think the availability for us to then sit down again and, and address, okay, now what should our next step be? But we're waiting for the last step to be completed. Two steps, how do they respond to the nineteen units that we've requested they make available through the authority to us, and what happens as a result of any units that may be bought back. I think the borough has a lot better chance of having boroughs being bought back by them, because they have a lot more outstanding. But we don't know that. So since we kind of made that our next step, we, we need to follow that through, and that's hand in hand with the borough. You know, I, I don't know that there's a lot more to add, except that we, we are, I think, we, we put a lot of effort. You don't see it, because there are no results. But I think we put a lot of effort. We spent a lot of time with Phil and Chris Vetter. There are two things, I guess, that, the kind of ways you look at this. You look at the money we've put in, and I think all of us up here agree, we put more than our share of money into what we've got in EDUs. But that really doesn't matter, unfortunately. What matters is what do the agreements say? I would tell you, I had a conversation with our attorney, Solicitor Buck, yesterday on the phone. We spent some time talking about the whole sewer issue, where we were, where it was going, and his, you know, caution was, "Look at the agreements. That's your contract. That's what the court's going to look at if you go that far. What do they say?" And I'm not so sure how they may be interpreted. They're, they're not as, that's nothing to do with the money that's been spent or put out. It's what's the contract say? So again, I had a conversation yesterday, and Todd had some earlier with, with the borough. So things are going on every day. We see small pieces of progress. I know that doesn't make you happy, because you want EDUs in your pocket tomorrow. But again, unfortunately, none of us were on the board when these decisions were made and things went forth, so we've got to try to pick that up, and we are trying to do that, and make something happen. You may not agree, but I believe we're doing it in a way that will make them available quicker than any other way we might do.
Linda? I just wanted to say, I fully understand that maybe you are making progress, but I just wish there was some written documentation somewhere of what has been happening, because, you know, we look at the minutes, we look at the sewer report, and we don't see anything. You know, and again, I mean, I will continue to email every month, but it would just be so nice if in the sewer report portion of these monthly meetings, something was written about what was happening.
Yeah, I know you made that comment to me in one of the letters, and actually, you know, I always have a thing that says, so there were my notes that, that I was going to review when we got to the sewer committee report, because what I thought I would do, because you asked that, is that make sure whether there's a sewer committee meeting or not, that under that, we'll make any comments that might be an update on what has happened. So I had a, actually, probably we've covered a lot of those, but I had a full page of notes. One of it was to talk about the letter that the borough sent out on July, on January 12th, kind of what, what that was doing, the purpose, and you may have even seen that letter, and that, that that, they had till March to respond back to that, that we were going to follow up with a letter of our own and kind of bring that up. So, so I've committed to basically do that just in, in my part of that report, whether it's a sewer committee meeting or not. We'll give an update, because I know you wanted to see something in the, the minutes. And that's fair, because we talk about that among ourselves, but you don't know it.
Sure.
Phil, you had your hand up.
When, when I drafted the letter, I wasn't proposing litigation. I was proposing bringing Mr. Vetter in to have a meeting with the borough's attorney and real representation from the borough, not Brian and the mayor, but people that really make a decision, and representatives from the township, and sit down and review what happened. And if you talk to Buck and say, "Look at the, the agreements, the agreements," they didn't live up to them. So it's real easy. Sit down with them, show them where they didn't live up to the agreements. And where we have every right to this stuff, and the plant was built by the federal government, it's fair to everybody to have that. There's so many pieces to that, it isn't funny. They don't have the need for sewer.
What, three of the five?
And, you know, it's all those pieces, so when is it, instead of saying, "Well, we're going to beg for ten or fifteen if they'll give them up to us," go there with the attorney, meet with their attorney, meet with some real representatives, Ted or maybe someone else there, and sit down and hash this out. Have them show you where they lived up to the agreement. Have them show you where they need these EDUs. They can't. And, you know, do I think it should go to court? Absolutely not. That's the craziest thing in the world. But do I think that somebody there has to have this really? I've been there standing in front of their, their meetings, and Buck's shooting me down, saying I mislead people. That's, and, and then the board members don't have a clue what they're talking about or what they think. They weren't there. So why couldn't there be someone from the sewer authority, someone from the real borough council or their sewer committee, Fred? Fred's a fair guy. Have Fred there, and one guy from the sewer committee, and Ted, their attorney, your attorney, or Chris Vetter, not your attorney, Chris Vetter, and I think I should be sitting there so I can help convey the parts, and sit down and hash it, say, "We want to have a meeting and hash this out." Go to court? That's crazy. That'll take forever.
As you know, in the past, Todd and I actually requested to meet, first of all, with Jeff Raymeyer, just the three of us.
I understand.
He, he refused to do that. We have suggested at least him and a couple other people. They have not wanted to do that. They, they may or may not agree to do that.
It's not a suggestion. It's, it's a demand that that happens, in my opinion. It's sending a letter saying, "We have to have this resolved, and we need to get it resolved."
And Phil, you, you know that the worst thing to do would be to have you in the room with that meeting. I know you have all the information, but you just set a certain stage for that.
I don't think that's, I, yeah, because I've been in front of them, trying to convey this information to them. I've sent them every report in the world.
You know, and Todd and I had a couple meetings, and you did agree. We said, "You know, Phil, probably better if you weren't," because even at borough meetings, because we've tried to keep that, so.
That's fine. Leave me out of it, and that's great. But have the information there, and have Chris with the information, and you with the real information. Show them, there's plans been drawn for everything in the borough. They couldn't use a hundred EDUs. They, their Chapter 94 report shows that they have more than enough capacity right now, and I disagree with you on what's the status of the upgrade. It does bring it back up to where it was, which means it will handle a thousand more EDUs than it is now. I think, that's really what it is.
But Phil, that thousand EDUs, is that based on 350 gallons a day?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
So you're saying that all the EDUs for that 2.25 million plant have never been allocated?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
You, you can, I can, I can send every report.
I'm, I'm just asking. I, I'm not disputing it.
There's a thousand EDU showing, they're saying that those thousand aren't real because of the grade, the upgrade isn't done. Well, if it's done, and we, I did check with John Smith. It's on track. They plan on being able to do the work in October. This is just silly. It's really silly. Get the information pulled together and do it. That's all.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to comment? All right. Thank you for your comments. I can just tell you that I think we've paid a lot of attention to it, and I think we are making progress. Phil, I, we'll have to talk about kind of what you're saying, because I, I don't know.
Let's have a sewer meeting.
Yeah, we, we should talk about that separate, about maybe Chris Vetter and some things, but let's not do that in a public environment, if that's okay. Okay. We shall move on with the agenda unless anybody else on the board wants to address anything. I don't, I don't have to make all the comments. All right, we're looking at ordinance and resolutions. We have Resolution 202401 in front of you. This would abolish the per capita tax, and...
I do love abolishing taxes.
Yes.
This is the highlight of my day.
Then you'll, then you can make the motion.
I would love to.
I would love to. Make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two four dash zero one, and we abolish the per capita tax.
I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second to abolish the per capita tax. This would be effective for this year, correct, Todd, so there would be no per capita tax this year?
I I half expected to see the tax collector in the audience because I know she was very excited about getting rid of this one as well.
All right, we have any questions before we vote?
I say, did I get a second? I wasn't paying attention.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Bob's second. I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so one of the things we don't get to do too often, but we were able to abolish a tax. So with five affirmative votes, the per capita tax is abolished. We have ordinance, I think we have another one, a resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven. Todd, this is just to confirm, actually, we already talked.
Yeah, actually, you recall, board took action last month to authorize a grant application to be submitted to your county for the community development block grant program. And while that motion was made and approved, the county wanted that in the form of a resolution. So we're just reaffirming that in the form of this resolution number, so if you could just vote on that again.
Sounds good, I make motion to approve a resolution number two zero two four dash zero seven.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven, questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, we have approved that. We have resolutions twenty twenty four dash oh eight, which is a sewer planning module, just a requirement we have to go through whenever there is, I guess, septic system proposed or informed.
Yeah, with new land development, new septic, and this is for on lot septic, so we need to submit the planning module to DEP and they require that action be approved by the board in the form of a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
I can have a motion in a second to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight, questions before we vote? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, but resolution is approved. Is this done, Todd, for every every time there is a new septic?
If it's on lot, we don't do that for if you're tying into the public sewer.
No, but just for the people that remain.
This is the first time I've ever seen one of these.
Anytime there's an on lot septic system, a new one, that goes to DEP, so they're.
Correct, we, there's a different form if there's.
Right.
It's basically the same form, but it doesn't involve a resolution if there's a involving public sewer. We have to get a letter from the sewer authority and the host plant, which is New Freedom Borough. So we submit a a letter from, for example, New Freedom Borough instead of a resolution.
So just to note that if we were to approve an on lot system, that information would be known to DEP. If they started to see a few of those and they might well question why.
Correct, if there's if there's going to be an on lot septic system, even those when it gets approved by or involves an on lot, not on lot, public sewer with a sewer EDU, we still have to notify DEP.
Right.
What type of sewer.
So that could prompt them if a few of those were done, that could prompt them to say, why are you doing that? You have you have a sewer plant, why aren't they tying in? Okay, just wanted to pass the other one. Good anticipation, the next thing up is subdivision and land development, and this is for the Theater Road property.
Good evening, I am Josh George with Land Works Civil Design, we are the civil engineer on this project at one twenty Theater Road. I'm joined by representatives of Willard Agri Service, Billy Willard on the left back there, and Tyler Adams with the hat on. So this project is what you just approved that resolution for, for the sewage planning module. And I'll get into that in a second, but I just want to give a very brief overview and then we'll jump right into the meat of this. This property is directly behind the old township building. So this is the piece at one twenty Theater Road, Theater Road ends at I eighty-three. And this is the piece on the left-hand side of Theater Road, right before you would potentially go out onto eighty-three if you were to continue to try to drive straight at that road. So it is about an eighteen acre parcel. It was subdivided originally from the O'Shea Lumber property about five years ago. So this lot was cut off about five years ago. We are proposing to develop and build an agricultural support facility. What Willard Agri Service does is they make fertilizer. So even though this is an industrial property and their use is technically industrial because of what they do, it's actually an agricultural support business, it's very unique, we think it fits well not only in Tru'sbury Township, but also in Southern York County and and this area in general. And Willard Agri Service, based in Maryland, but provides these kind of services throughout the mid-Atlantic region. They have facilities in Maryland, in Pennsylvania, in Delaware, and they do this work all across this region. The way that works is they take the raw constituents of fertilizer, they mix it with water, and it goes out directly from there to farmers in the local area. And so they're best served by having facilities dotting the agricultural landscape that are not too terribly far from where the farmers are. So the purpose for this facility is to have another operation here in south central Pennsylvania that can get to all the farmers within a couple of counties right around this immediate area. They have their headquarters down in Frederick, Maryland, they have facilities in Mount Aaron, Maryland, out in Chambersburg, Greenwood, Delaware, just to name a couple, and you can certainly check them out on their website to find out all about what they do. So before you tonight for approval is the proposed development of a twenty-two thousand three hundred square foot agricultural facility on industrial property. It is going to have two access points onto Theater Road. They're both on the left-hand side of Theater Road as you head to the east. The idea with the two access points is that the tractor trailers and the trucks that both bring in the raw materials and leave with the completed fertilizer can make an entire swing around the property so that you can come in one access drive and come out the other. Trucks will load in a couple of different places. Trucks will load both inside the building and those bays that you see are meant for the trucks to completely drive directly through the building. So trucks will pull in one side of the building, get loaded up and come right out the other side to head in and head out. Trucks can also circulate around the property to deliver and drop off the materials that are needed to make the fertilizer. There are some tanks that are proposed on the property. The three large tanks on the bottom of the screen are the. About seventy foot diameter, Billy, does that sound about right? Yeah, it's about seventy feet in diameter to hold materials. And then the the smaller tank thirty-six, or thirty, rather, five by six smaller diameter tanks directly adjacent there. The project will be served by public water, so we're going to be extending the water main from York Water back Theater Road. Right now, the water main is on Susquehanna Trail, and so there will be a small main extension back Theater Road to serve this property. The vast majority of the water that will be used here will go out, go back out on the trucks, as I said. They're not using water for production in terms of dumping it into the sewer. It's actually all being used to go back out as fertilizer, so liquid fertilizer goes back out of this facility. There will be a small amount of restroom usage, of course, in the building, and that's the only portion of the property that goes to the on lot septic system. It's just the restroom facility in the building. Interestingly enough, and I don't need to dive into the details here, but there is a sewer main on the property. Unfortunately, it's not connected to anything that we can access, that main.
Ironic.
It it's very ironic given the conversations that have been going on here. It's a, it's a sewer main that was put in in the mid-two thousands. It actually extends the whole way back to the top of Hayne Road. It goes down to the exit two wastewater treatment plant. That treatment plant was recently purchased at the end of twenty twenty-three by York Water Company. So York Water Company owns that treatment plant. However, York Water Company does not own this particular sewer main. Their ownership stops about two properties north of here. And this main is is dry, has been dry since it was built. There's not a speck of flow in this main, it's been dry for about fifteen years. We cannot connect to it because York Water Company doesn't own it, and until they own it, we can't do anything, it just sits there.
Who owns it?
The property owners whose property it's on. So Willard Agri Service, using Rock Land Company as their entity, owns the portion that's on this property. O'Shea Lumber owns the portion that's on the property to the north. Just north of that, Top Flight Corporation owns a small piece before it gets to where York Water Company's ownership starts. Moving south, it's partly owned by Atlantic Kason. And I I don't know the all the property owners, the whole way back to Hayne Road, but it's owned individually by each party the whole way back through there. It's quite a mess. I I know all this because when we started this project, we investigated the option of connecting to this public sewer. But because it was not public, we could not connect to it. We had meetings with York Water Company, they're happy to provide service to us, but it's on them, it's incumbent upon them, it's their requirement to take ownership of the line upstream and downstream so that it can actually be used. We can offer it for dedication to them, but they have to get all of the property owners along this path, and they have not done that. So here we are, we're doing a septic system and you're approving a resolution so that we can put a septic system on a property that has a sewer on it. It is ironic and it's unfortunate, but this this is the way life goes. There, this project will have stormwater management. We are proposing a stormwater management basin on the north side of the property that will capture all of the runoff that is generated by the impervious surfaces, both building and paving. There will be some gravel area for parking of tractor trailer trailers so that they can be there when they might be there at the facility for a few days. We have about ten to twelve spaces, if I remember correctly, for tractor trailer parking. There is also the existing billboard on this property. If you have ever been back there, you'll know that where that billboard is, we are maintaining that. There's an easement on the property that we inherited for that billboard. The only restriction for us is we can't block it, so nobody can see it. Basically, we can do whatever we want on the property, but the sightlines have to remain for that billboard. And that billboard really points out the I eighty-three anyway, no problem does, it's going to stay just like it is as part of the project. We're going to do a little bit of roadway widening on Theater Road back along our property frontage. If you've been back there, you know Theater Road, I guess Peters Out is probably the right way to say it. It peters out both on into Atlantic Kason's property and then also onto this parcel. We're going to widen it out to twenty-four feet, so it's got adequate lane widths. The Atlantic Kason folks will be a kind of a side beneficiary of this because they'll get a freshly paved road right in front of their property, at no cost to them, but it's just necessary for us to have a facility the trucks can get in and mount appropriately. I think those are the highlights, we do have a number of waivers and modifications associated with this project because of the unique physical location of the project, being at the end of Theater Road with no additional access beyond it, and also because it's an industrial property adjoining other industrial lands and also adjoining I eighty-three. Gentlemen, do you want to run through each of those individually, or do you want to do those in one fell swoop, or what's the best?
What's, I I don't, I don't have a problem just looking at all of them, but does anybody want to run through them individually?
We can vote on them as.
Yeah, let's let's vote on them together, but let's look at them individually.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you want to get an explanation of each one?
Sure.
Do you want me to go through, I'll just, as quick as I can here. So first would be the submission of a preliminary plan, we've asked that be waived since we are in a land development situation here. It's a one-phase project, we don't feel a preliminary plan is necessary. Second would be the submittal of an environmental impact statement. As I said, we've covered stormwater, we've covered sewer and water, and this is an industrial property. There are no impacts to streams or anything on this property, so we've asked for that to be waived. The next would be a perimeter planting buffer along the I eighty-three side of the property. I don't think that makes a whole lot of sense, so we've asked that to be waived. The next would be the angle of the roadways relative to Theater Road. Because the ordinance requires no less than seventy-five degrees for new driveways, we're about sixty-five degrees with our angle so that the trucks can come in and the trucks can come out. Essentially, Theater Road and this portion of the property is one-way for all practical purposes. It's technically a two-way street right here, but it's one-way for all functional purposes. So we've asked that the board grant a waiver for the angle of the driveway relative to Theater Road. The next would be the use of roof drain stormwater seepage pits. This is an industrial project with an overall stormwater management basin. It does not necessarily make sense to have roof drain seepage pits like it might in a residential project. The next would be filtration of stormwater from paved surfaces. As I mentioned, there is a proposed stormwater management basin on the north side of the property. All of the water from the site enters that basin before being ultimately discharged down to an existing storm drain pipe. So we've asked for a waiver of that. The next would be the spacing of the street trees along Theater Road. We have a very limited amount of frontage, you can see that most of that frontage is taken up by driveways. There's also an overhead med ed line right there, so we can't really plant street trees directly under their facilities. So we've asked for a modification to have us allow the spacing of the street trees to not necessarily be exactly what the ordinance requires. The next one would be planting of a building perimeter buffer. The ordinance has a stipulation that the immediate area around buildings be planted with vegetation. That's a physical impossibility on this project because of the function of the building. As I mentioned earlier, the trucks pull in one side and pull out the other. You obviously can't have vegetation in areas of driveways that are directly up against all the sides of the building on both on what what is the north or the top and the bottom here, the east and the west. We do have perimeter landscaping in the front of the building where the employee parking is, so we're providing it there. We just can't provide it on the other sides of the building.
Is there any other space on the site that you could put additional? Plannings?
We have, excuse me, we have plannings along the front in the spaces that we can, and we have plannings along the front of the building in the spaces that we can. There is no weather wear around the building that will allow landscape to be replaced because of the function as an industrial use.
Okay.
And if I could add, there is, you said it'd be on the west side of the property. There is a a natural buffer already of trees and shrubs and so forth that you can't see through.
Okay.
The next would be the screening of loading areas. Again, given the industrial nature of this, the fact that we're surrounded by other industrial zone land and the way that this building functions, we're asking for a modification of the screening of the loading areas. And as I said, probably about three quarters of loading areas are actually inside the building anyway. So it's a unique building setup that's not typical for any kind of industrial warehouse facility. And then the last would be that landscape buffer. Todd just mentioned that we have a natural buffer on the west side, so we don't need to plant that. We have I eighty-three on the east side, we have Theater Road on the south side. And the north side actually has a buffer, but it's three or four hundred feet removed from where we're doing the development. There's a full wooded area on the north side of the property that's completely untouched by this project. So it's about three and a three hundred and fifty, four hundred feet away from where we're developing, so that's remaining as is. So we've asked for a modification to not have to meet the strict requirements of the landscape buffer. And then finally, two stormwater management waivers, one has to do with the side slopes of the stormwater management basin. Again, this is an industrial property, no kids, no neighbors who would be potentially near our stormwater facility. Plus, we are going to have fencing along the Theater Road side to prevent access to the property. And there's existing fencing on several sides of the property already. The west side is Todd mentioned where that landscaping is, there's already a fence along a portion of that. O'Shea has a portion of fencing on their property, so there's very, very limited access to this site. And that goes then hand in hand with the final stormwater waiver, which is the fencing around the basin itself. Because the property itself is primarily fenced, we don't need another fence around the basin itself. So we've asked for a waiver of that requirement. Sorry for that long list, but it's a unique property with a unique use, and so it just necessitates quite a few modifications.
What's the total number of modifications?
It depends how you count, on on the cover sheet of the plans, there's eleven, on the waiver request forms, there's twelve. The reason that is is because two of them are combined on the cover sheet. Section seven ten four A and seven ten four B are combined on the cover sheet, but they're listed separately on the actual document itself.
Well, Todd, I've only seen seven.
I don't know, you should have three pages.
The screening, the layout, the buffer.
I have two.
I didn't miss a page.
I got two.
Yeah, I can answer that because I just put it together, so.
Okay, you're welcome to have mine.
I don't mean to pass the buck, but I.
I think we understood them, I was just, I just.
But I I could have said they've been discussed and, yes.
They're all listed on the cover sheet too, I don't know if you have a copy of the cover sheet in front of you or if not, Todd, I can certainly pull it up on the screen.
And staff's in support of the modifications, is that?
Correct, staff recommended the planning commission that they be approved. The planning commission looked at them and reviewed them at their January meeting. And we made a motion to recommend to the board that they be approved as well.
Good. I have a question about, um, how the fertilizer is being mixed and whatnot onsite.
One of these guys.
One of those guys. Um, we're not connected to any sewer. You said the, the septic, onsite septic is for the bathrooms only.
Correct.
How is that being mixed? Where would it go in the event of a spill? What type of fertilizer are we dealing with that could potentially come into contact with the surrounding grounds?
Billy Willard, Willard Agri Service, our headquarters, uh, fifty South Wesley Street, Frederick, Maryland. Alright, so our business is a bit unique in terms of the product that we blend. And that's basically, basically what we do is blend raw ingredients. So we bring in raw ingredients, some nitrogen, nitrogen solution, uh, liquid phosphates. We bring in dry potassium chloride and we melt that. So they all get blended inside our building in a fifteen-ton blender mixer and mix with water. So if you go to Home Depot and get a bag of ten-ten-ten, well, it's ten percent nitrogen, ten percent phosphorus, ten percent potassium. And it's seventy percent filler in, in that regard because it's dry fertilizer. Our, our seventy percent of our ten-ten-ten is water, okay? So it gets blended with water and non-hazmat material. Either the farmer picks it up, or we deliver it out to the farm to his tank, or or we deliver it to our applicators and it gets spread on the farmer's fields. Uh, in terms of containments, PA is probably, PA and New Jersey are probably the toughest states in terms of what they're gonna require us to have in terms of containment for tanks, and that's what you're speaking to in terms of, you know, do you have, if you have a tank leak or a tank rupture, we're required to have a secondary containment for each of those tanks so we can hold that.
Okay. So that, it's being built into it, and if there is a problem, it's going to stay inside that building until it can be cleaned up?
Well, inside the building, yes. The tanks that are outside will have double containment also, okay?
Okay, so you, you, you have the, the tanks inside for the mixing purposes?
Correct.
And your storage tanks on the outside?
Correct.
Each of them have secondary containment?
Yes.
Good. Is this the type of fertilizer that explodes?
No.
Wonderful news.
The one that, the one that everyone hears about and the horrible event that happened in West Texas is dry ammonium nitrate. And we do not handle dry ammonium nitrate, okay? So our materials are non-explosive.
Wonderful news. That was all the questions I had.
That's a good question.
Any other questions? So what we need to have is the billboard is so willing is a.
I, I, if I may.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the modification requests, um, all three pages. Um, that, uh, staff was, uh, recommending. Do I need to be a little bit more specific, or we, we got it?
We'll, we'll cover that.
Okay, wonderful.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a motion in a second to approve the, um, modifications that have been requested. If there are no further questions, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, so we have approved the modifications.
And I need to confirm that, Wendy Webb, you that will cover that, not we, so.
Thank you.
She's not here, so we'll, we'll blame her, huh?
But she is, she is joining us, uh, virtually, so.
Hi, Wendy.
So the next thing we need to do is to, um, consider approving the plan itself?
Are there any, um?
I was gonna say, if, if, as we typically do, um, if the board's showing clients approve the plan, would, uh, ask that you do it on the condition that all the comments within the C.S. Davidson letter. It's actually, it's a typo, they have May second on the letter, but it was actually issued June second, uh, C.S. Davidson.
So we're, we're going with the actual date of June second?
Yes.
Alright. Make a motion to approve the subdivision plan.
It's a land development plan technically.
Land development plan, thank you. Don't know who did that one either. Uh, approve the land development plan. Okay. Uh, make a motion to approve the land development plan, um, for the Theater Road project um, as long as all of the conditions in the C.S. Davidson letter dated June second, twenty-twenty-three have been met.
Second. We have a motion in a second that would approve the land development plan.
Excuse me, can I ask one question then before I almost forgot? I, I think I know this answer, but I just wanna confirm, there is a hydrant that's going to be installed by York Water, correct? Back then? Is there a hydrant?
I think, I'm pretty sure there's a hydrant, I don't, in front, right up in that area somewhere.
There's already one there?
There's not one right in front of the property, 'cause the water main doesn't go back. I'm not sure if there's one out on the corner of Susquehanna Trail and by the animal hospital, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And I thought I saw them back there.
I, I, 'cause I had some communication from York Water, so.
They usually tell us, or if you want one from the township's perspective, I mean, they'll probably put one in. You'll end up having to pay the quarterly fee to York Water Company.
Yeah, we do that now, but, uh, so.
We have no objection to it if that's the way that the township wants it, but it's not been part of the discussions up to this point that I've seen.
But that must have been with, uh, my communication with York Water, I don't know.
Where's the closest hydrant? At the, at, um, Theater and?
My map, the closest one is at, uh, Church of England.
That's a bit of a drive.
Yeah, I think there's a. I don't know if I can pull it up here.
I would think there wouldn't be one closer just because of the distances you're talking about there. The fact that the water main's doing this along Susquehanna Trail, usually at high points, they like that hydrants as a blow-off.
Does that mean to be?
Yeah, see, I, I think there's one right around the area of the township building. Across the street sticks in my mind, but.
The old township building.
Does that mean to be a part, a part of the plan?
Uh, bear with me here, I, I might be able to pull this up here.
Off topic, but did anyone notice that the plan looks like a tractor with a bucket on it? I'm just throwing it out there. Uh, that's one of the first things I noticed when I looked at the plan.
We may be incredibly subliminal, you're not supposed to get that.
You can tell you have small kids.
Uh, true story, I was driving, um, somewhere, up eighty-three. We're going to the Great American Outdoor Show. And there was a, uh, a, a tractor with like the bucket on it, uh, digging on the side of the road. And my son looked at it and said, Daddy, look, that's an excavator. And I was like, oh my goodness, that is exactly what that is. He knows what an excavator is. He's three years old.
Three.
Three years old. Yeah.
I should have Ryan up here, helping find these hydrants. Okay, yeah, I'm looking here. This, this indicates a hydrant right here.
Mm-hmm.
And again, we can make that request, um, that, that's up to the board, but it would probably make sense to have one up at this intersection.
Yeah, you might want it at the Susquehanna Trail intersection with York Road, as opposed to back.
Right, that's a mean, and not, not back.
Yeah, yeah, because they're gonna come in and tap the main anyway to put it in.
It's, it's gonna have water from York Water.
Correct.
Yeah.
And sprinkler system and everything else.
No sprinkler.
No.
And I'll ask the, the, the fire chief here, that would make more sense to put it out along the trail so that you could go back commerce and then also have access on the trail there as well, so, but. What I'll do is I'll put, I'll do some checking on that and put that on the agenda, 'cause that's something that can, uh, that would not be on this plan anyway. It's what he passed out there, so.
So we can proceed with?
Yes, yep.
With the plan?
Motion in a second.
We do have a second, did you?
Jeff, no, no, Jeff.
Not him, a second.
Jeff, Jeff got me.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, you did, I remember, I do remember that now. Alright, so we do have a motion in a second to approve the land development plan. Are there questions, other questions before we vote?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, plan is approved.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Look forward to doing business here in the township.
Alright, look forward to that, thank you. Alright, we have some reports now, manager's report, Todd, anything you wanna add to your report?
No, other than, um, just to, for the public's, uh, information. We applied for, this past month, we applied for a community development block grant, uh, for two funding years, twenty-four and twenty-six. Twenty thousand dollars to update the zoning ordinance. Uh, and then twenty thousand dollars to update the subdivision land development, uh, ordinance. And we did apply for forty thousand dollars under the York County Marcella Shale Legacy Fund. Uh, that was not granted to us. However, on the brighter side of things, under the similar program, the York County Open Space and Land Preservation Grant Program, we were awarded one hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward the purchase of additional land for Miller Park. Other than that, I don't have anything in particular, if you have any questions on what's on my report.
Anybody have questions for Todd?
No.
I guess you're putting, putting, we're wishing him a happy birthday coming up.
That's right. How old are you, Todd?
I'm sixty-one today.
But you will be sixty-two tomorrow.
On Friday.
Friday, excuse me, two days.
Still young.
So happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
It's time we got used to saying s- with the sixes.
Sixes, yeah, yeah, that's tough, I'm sure.
Mike McLean's birthday is tomorrow.
Mike McLean, our maintenance supervisor's tomorrow.
So do, do we know?
And any reason they know about, I came in this evening for the meeting and Mike's office and my office is covered with balloons and everything else.
Happy birthday, uh, banners. Do we know who planted the balloons?
I do.
Interesting.
Because there was one person in the office here yet when I left.
Uh-huh.
And I passed them going out the parking lot when I got back here five thirty.
Ah.
I know who the guilty culprit is.
Alright.
A lot of hot air went into all those balloons from the air. Okay, um, we do not have any report from the solicitor, nothing for him to report to us. You do have in front of you the codes enforcement, so enforcement and zoning enforcement report. As usual, it's pretty detailed, I don't know if there's anything Todd wants to point out.
Um, the, the only thing, you know, significant is, uh, just to let you know that, uh, zoning officer Cliff Tinsley is working, um, and he has issued a formal violation notice to Handy Dandy Dumpster, uh, regarding the storage of trash overnight in the dumpsters and, and other large trash items. Stored overnight, which is not permitted, uh, 'cause that was approved only for storing empty dumpsters, so. He has cited them. He, he, well, he's given them the thirty-day zoning ordinance.
Okay, so that's what they have, they've had thirty days.
So they have thirty days to either comply or appeal to the zoning hearing board.
And this is near, uh, Blonrock, right?
Correct, yeah.
When does their thirty days expire?
Um, I don't know the exact date, but I know it's very soon.
Okay.
Uh, among other enforcement, I guess, auditors we have, it would be possible to revoke that usage permit if they don't comply.
That is correct, the, the, uh, use and occupancy permit that was issued to them, that could be revoked, uh, because they're not operating under the permit and the approval.
And I just say that because past experience would say we may not see them comply or continue to comply, so we do have an option we could use that would basically stop their operation.
Correct, correct. And, uh, the, the use and occupancy permit was actually applied for and issued to the property owner because they do not own that property. Uh, so Handy Dandy Dumpster was given a copy of that notice, but it's actually the property owner who would be citing. And, and even though that permit is in the name of the property owner, if that were to be rescinded and revoked, um, they could not operate out of there because that property wouldn't be approved for that use.
So if there's a fine involved, who, who gets a?
It would be the property owner.
It's the property owner.
So hopefully the, the property owner will.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Take care of it with his tender.
Any questions, anybody has to top of the report?
No.
They have the maintenance department report and, uh, questions on that, or? I, I did note that, um, there is a security camera installed now at Miller Park. It is working thanks to Ryan showing me the report or, or the, so still working, right?
Yep.
So it's a good view of the driveway and a good portion of the park.
Is it solar powered?
The Hill Park is completely covered by cameras. And if we don't have it covered here, I think we're working on that too, so.
We, we, we do want to add some more Miller Park, uh, but we, we wanna explore other options. Fortunately, down at Windy Hill Park, we were able to tap into the Wi-Fi with S Y C right there. We tried to see if we could pick up a Wi-Fi signal down at Miller Park from a, a nearby business or home and, and kinda work out a deal to help out, uh, you know, if they could help us out. But we could not pick up any signals anywhere. So we actually, the one that is installed currently is, uh, data-driven through a cellphone line. But there's no electric or anything there you'd ask that, so it is solar-powered, or correct?
Okay.
Yeah, I saw the solar panel there.
And, uh, so right now we just have the one there, but it's a, a good view. Uh, it's up real high when you first do the entrance, so you'll be able to see clearly.
It's a good view.
Anybody comes and goes, and it actually captures up to the end of the parking lot, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good view. So that, and you're going to have some communication with the state police to let them know we have those installed?
Correct.
Since I had asked when there was an incident.
Yeah, there was an incident there quite a few months ago, and they'd ask if we had a camera footage, so.
And they're not being monitored by us or the state police, it's just if there was some, some suspicion.
Same as Windy Hill, I. Yeah, Ryan, Ryan takes care of the cameras, I assume, you, you periodically check, just make sure they're working. But, yeah, we.
Okay.
But, uh, no, we don't sit and watch them. You could, you could, but.
It, it was a slow day at the office. We, we decided to check in on the Little League game, yes.
If you're gonna sit and watch them, I, I, I think, I feel sorry for you if you don't have anything else in your life to do. So, but, but they've been helpful in the past, if we had issues, particularly down at Windy Hill, I know we had an issue and were able to use the cameras, so.
Okay. Uh, are we done installing the, uh, uh, Shrewsbury Township sites? Or we still have a few left?
Just a guess. Um, the ones that we ethically have left were replacement ones on I eighty-three. Um, I have been in contact with PennDOT and have been pretty much rushed off because we need their assistance.
'Cause we, we have to have a, like a truck and all sorts of other lights and.
We were able to do just one, one eighty-three, which was supposed to be blown down towards Verroin side coming into Pennsylvania.
Okay.
We were able to get way off the shoulder there, we were fine doing that. There are any other ones need to be, we are not able to get off the shoulder or enough, so.
Safety first.
Correct.
Alright.
There are signs there, I think they were provided by PennDOT years ago, they're just a different design. But there are existing ones there, I still have, I think, two more ready to go up at PennDOT.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And actually, uh, we, I've had two other municipalities comment on them, so they thought they looked nice, we're glad to see them up.
Okay, any, any other questions from anybody? Our speed, uh, cameras have been, uh, are being moved to, oh, we're at Wendy Hill Road now?
Yeah, they're by the, uh, park.
Okay.
Yeah, the request was for the intersection there or the stretch there between Deer Creek Road and Toddler Road. But we now have them mounted on trailers, so they're easier to, to move around.
I saw that. I wasn't sure if they were ours or the state police, 'cause it's, it's a state.
No, they're, they're ours.
Yeah.
Because what happened, every time we went to plant them, you know, put them in the ground, you had to go out and do a one-call and, and all that stuff.
Ah.
Had to pound post in. Now we can quickly move them around.
Okay.
And, uh, so the issue is, in that stretch, there's just nowhere to get a trailer off the side of the road, so, uh, we just decided to.
Move it up a little bit. Move it up a little bit.
Save this area is there around the park.
Okay. That's a, that's a really good spot to speed anyway.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's a straightaway.
I might have sped past it when I saw it a couple of days ago.
Do you have the results from Country Club Road, what did that roughly show, do you recall? Was there?
Um.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think I have that summarized yet.
Okay, wait till, wait till it's done, that's no problem.
Ryan gives me the reports, but I don't have that summarized.
Did, um, are you, and are copies of, of our results going to the people that requested the speed studies?
Those that made the request, yes.
So like Shirley got one?
I was gonna say, I have to send out Thistle Churchill yet.
Right, so she gets one, okay. Any other questions?
Thistle's is the only one that was actually speeding, probably, yeah, so far.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so far.
Alright, you have the C S Davidson report? Questions on that, planning commission report, question? Um, you have my report there, some of the meetings and things that took place. You have questions there, you can see me anytime. And I believe that, uh, that would bring us where we would have a sewer committee report, so I think we've probably covered most of what there would be to, to say there. And we will be giving an update at each meeting, as what's been done in the prior months, so that there will be an update to the people that rightfully have a lot of concern about what's going on there. I'm sure we do share that concern, and, um, hopefully one day soon, we'll be able to say there's some progress beyond what we've reached so far. Uh, I think, Todd, there are just several things under old business that are basically updates.
Yeah, only, uh, some quick updates here, uh, the director for the regional rec commission with, uh, New Freedom Borough. The ads are currently out, uh, through middle of February, that's actually being managed by New Freedom Borough. Um, I understand they have a good number of applicants and, and somewhat, some great experience, so once they get all of those. Uh, Art myself, representing the township, will also meet with the manager, and I, I can imagine their council president from New Freedom to review them. And, uh, hopefully have a successful candidate for that, so that is moving forward.
So I guess we'll be reaching the point where we need to start looking at committee members.
Correct.
For that, and you have, we have some candidates.
Correct.
To interview, I believe.
Yes.
So that we can get that firmly established and moving forward.
Uh, next item is just to update you on the regional comprehensive plan, uh, for those that aren't familiar. That's, uh, kind of a plan, taking a look at what you have now in the township as far as resources, services and so forth, and looking into the future, what you'd like to do. And that comprehensive plan is actually a regional plan, which involves Glen Rock Borough, New Freedom Borough, Shoesbury Borough, and We're Over Borough, so there's one large, uh, comp plan, one single comp plan. Uh, one thing that we're going to probably be doing out of that, uh, because it ties in with the comp plan, is the official map.
Right.
If you recall, we did that about two years ago, and, uh, because we, we actually did most of what's in the boroughs in order to complete ours. Uh, all the boroughs seem to be interested in that, so we'll probably end up with a regional official map as well to complement.
But our piece of that is pretty much.
Correct.
Done, it'll just be incorporated back into the rest.
And, and that'll be covered under the comp plan update, so. Uh, but, uh, there you can see, the basic study, uh, by the end of March will be about eighty-five percent completed. Citizen participation is expected to be fifty percent completed, uh, the key interviews of the community, uh, should be a hundred percent. Meetings forty percent, and then of course, uh, preparing the document. So, you know, has any questions on that?
And then we have the chase truck.
Um, we, we have some folks here from Shoesbury Farah Company and, and Rose, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but if I say something incorrectly, please, uh, make it right. Um, of course, as, as everyone knows, we implemented the EMS, uh, tax. And, uh, the significant part of that tax will be going to Rose, and they will be putting a chase vehicle, uh, at Shoesbury Farah Company. My understanding is that Rose did approach Shoesbury Farah Company, Shoesbury Farah Company's, uh, I, I guess, uh, directors or, I, I don't know what you call them, they're the Farah Company, the.
The department.
Department, department as a whole voted, uh, and, uh, they agreed to house the chase truck at Shoesbury Farah Company. And, um, my understanding is, at least till, till we get things up and off the ground, there, there won't be any charge by the Farah Company. I would anticipate probably at some point there will be to cover electric and water and so forth, but, um, the point I just want to make is they recognize the importance and the value of that service. And, and they're willing to offer up the fire department, uh, to get the project up and off the ground, so we appreciate that and thank them for that. And it looks like, uh, for, for them to get a new vehicle, you're looking at six months to a year, uh, for a chase truck. Uh, Co-Stars, I believe they're saying four to six months, uh, from when it's ordered, but my understanding is Glen Rock Ambulance has a, a vehicle that, uh, I know the last time we met, which was back on January nineteenth. Uh, they expressed that they would be willing to loan that to, to Rose, do you have any update on that?
Yes, they, uh, they were talking with their administration, and then we just had actually a text message dialogue yesterday about setting the, uh, uh, sit down and, and discuss that.
Okay.
Hopefully, hopefully that goes through.
And, uh, they had all the, it was reported at that meeting that they have all the medic spots filled, positions, and they were still in need of four E M Ts, I don't know if that number's changed.
That's true, uh, yes, they're still, we're baptized for the four E M Ts, uh, our EMSG's actually on a, a cruise boat this week, so.
Okay.
I don't know, uh, what is, what is coming yet, um, but then we have all, all the parent spots, and.
So I just want to update the board where we were with that, I, I don't know if you, you've got anything to add?
That is it.
Okay.
And actually, it's a, a nice addition for the township, because you now have help that's a lot closer to a majority of the residents of the township, so we're looking forward to that as well. Any other old business, we will move to new business. The first one, um, we actually have a, three physicians in the township that are elected auditors. Um, we don't use them, they don't have to do anything, in some townships, they actually do the audit. Um, but we have a professional CPA firm do our audit, we think that's the right way to do that, to really make sure we're getting a thorough examination of everything. And, there are some townships, and I guess boroughs, where some of the board also work for the township, they're maybe on the road crew or do something. Um, in that case, the elected auditors have to set the salary of the supervisor who is working and something else. We don't allow that in Shoesbury Township, you can't be an employee of the township and serve on the board, so. We really have no use for an elected auditor, even though there's one vacancy, I don't.
We're, we're still required by law to, to have the positions filled, and they are required by law to meet annually to reorganize, and that's.
That seems very efficient.
Did they meet?
I know, I, I don't make the laws.
Did they meet? Cause they meet.
We did, they have not met this year, they're, they are supposed to meet the day after the board reorganizes.
Reorganized, right.
Um, but the problem was, we did not get notified here as to who the, uh, successful candidates were from the election until.
That's because they're.
Maybe, uh, maybe two weeks ago.
Because they were all right in.
They were all three right in position, it was a two-year, a four-year, and a six-year term. So, the sixth year is Neil Mullins, four-year term is Kelly Jarvis, and the two-year, uh, was Doug Hope, who declined. I don't know, we have a Doug Hope in, in, in the township, we're thinking maybe it was Doug Hope, the county commissioner.
I was gonna say, I, I didn't think he lived in the township.
No, he does not, so.
No wonder he declined.
The Doug Hope position for two years, so.
Were, were all of these up this year?
Yes.
That's not mathematically possible.
That's why they're two, four, and six years.
Yeah.
Um, so, with that said, you know, we don't have to do anything tonight, but, uh, maybe for next month, we can.
And, and we can just appoint someone.
Correct.
We'll keep it in back of our minds.
We're taking applications, just.
No.
If anyone is interested in this.
You get paid ten dollars for one meeting a year, and that's about.
Ten dollars?
I think it's a ten, isn't that what they get paid?
Yeah.
For their meeting, they get paid ten dollars.
No.
I think it's free.
We don't pay them anything, I've never paid them.
They have to escort, I think.
I was gonna say.
We, we must have to tip them then, I guess, I don't know.
So. Well, if we hear.
This is gonna be tough, I don't think anyone's gonna volunteer.
We hear of anybody that's interested, we'll come back and note that next week, or next month, but it, it doesn't affect us. I guess information, Todd, we have a list of delinquent tax remittals, um.
Yeah, and again, this is just for your information, um, we have, uh, between the real estate tax, fire protection tax, and hydrant tax. At face value, uh, the total billed in two thousand twenty-three was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, there's eight thousand one hundred dollars that went into tax claim, which for a municipality is, is, it's a really very low percentage.
About two percent.
A little over two percent, um, most are much higher than that, so.
Yeah, then one, one board member, um, actually questioned, thought, boy, that's a lot, well, I think it's because it's a long list, but also it's the real estate tax, so it's not much money.
Yeah, it's the.
Now, we still collect those, I mean, they don't.
Right, yeah, they go to tax claim.
They're just, it's just a report the tax collector gives us that they're delinquent, but, um, they won't, they won't get away without that, and my guess is, um, you talk to the people, and I think some of the board has just casually mentioned it to a few. They forgot, and that's probably what we'll find with most of them. Alright, we have an application for payment to, um, Kinsley. This is, I guess, uh.
Yeah, this is.
The bounce of Miller Park, and there's playgrounds and all.
Yeah, this is the final application for payment for the improvements down at Miller Park, which included three pavilions, uh, as well as, uh, new playgrounds, some benches. And, the total contract is, uh, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Of that, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, which is about half, little, little under half of that, uh, we received a grant from Pennsylvania Department of Community and Natural Resources, so. A good portion of that was paid through a grant, so this is the final application for payment, number eight, the amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents. We do have a one-year maintenance bond, uh, on the project, so if there are any issues, grass doesn't come up in the spring and so forth, um, we'll have that bond, should they not come back and take care of it.
How much is that?
Um, I don't know that number right offhand.
Twenty-nine, oh.
No, for the bond, it's usually ten percent of, of the, uh, federal contracts, it would be roughly fifty-nine thousand.
Alright, make a motion to approve application number eight to Kinsley Construction, the amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred, ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents. I'll second it.
We have a motion to second to approve the payment to Kinsley, any questions before we vote? After the vote?
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, that payment is approved. Next item is, uh, purchase of picnic tables for the pavilions at Miller Park.
Yes, we just talked, we have three new pavilions down at Miller Park, pretty large one, then a medium size, and then a small one. We did not include the picnic tables in the original contract, and the reason being, of course, when you get a contractor, they're gonna do a markup, you know, everything you could purchase, so. We'd agreed at that time that we would purchase the picnic tables ourselves to avoid that, plus we can purchase them under the state contracts, it's already been put out for bid, uh, ordered to the lowest bidder through the Commonwealth. Um, so for the picnic tables down there, um, and this was a picnic table that was highly, uh, recommended by our landscape architect, this is what you would expect. Um, they're a commercial grade picnic table, um, and that total for, for all the picnic tables for the pavilions is twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Do they come assembled? Or do we have to?
No.
We have to put them together?
We got something for you, Ryan.
I, I kind of thought that, so they, they come in the, the pieces will have to be assembled.
Not in boxes.
Tw- twenty-four of these, sixteen, sixteen tables. Is that what I'm saying?
Yes. Yes, and three of those are, are handicap ADA accessible.
Okay.
Questions or a motion?
We need to, we need to approve, uh, the, the purchase.
Alright, we need a motion to approve the purchase.
So. Second.
A motion to second to approve the purchase of picnic tables, if there are no questions, we shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, purchase of picnic tables is approved, and now you want us to look at a skid loader.
Yes, um, this was a request by Mike. He currently have a wheeled skid loader, um, the one he, he's looking to, he'd like to trade in our old skid loader, uh, for a track loader. Uh, because, again, I'm not out there, and, uh, and Ryan maybe can speak to this, but, uh, he's just telling me that, you know, you get better traction and so forth out there. I know, um, you get into some soft areas, uh, they've had to bottom out already, I know, they tried to spread sand down at Miller Park in the big, uh, volleyball courts, and it doesn't work with a wheeled loader. Uh, where a track would work with that. The other plus with this one, um, I'm understanding is the bucket has, it's an extended bucket, so they can actually get up higher to actually dump material, uh, stone, uh, and so forth out of the yard here. The, the current one, I believe, when you go to dump, you're actually hitting the top of the bed, uh, as it is now. Um, I did look at our capital.
This is the one we have?
Yeah, this is very similar to what we have.
Got it.
And it'll look similar to this, except it'll be the track.
And you, and, and you want, you want one that looks closer to the, uh, to the plan that we saw just a little bit ago with like the.
Yes, the, the.
Yeah, okay.
Land development.
Is this larger than the one we have?
Yes, the weight is higher on it.
Yeah, that's, I saw that, okay. Right.
Uh, we did, I looked at our, our capital budget, um, and we did budget a hundred and thirty thousand for the skid loader. This particular one is, it's a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Uh, trade-in on our two thousand fifteen model is twenty-six thousand, uh, for a total sale of eighty-two for forty. Forty thousand would come out of liquid fuels, and then the other forty-two thousand four would come out of general fund.
Okay, and we're trading it into the place we'd be purchasing this from, so we don't have to worry about putting it out for bid or dealing with sealed bids or anything like, like that.
They, they get traded off when you exchange keys.
Okay.
Is this a, um, Co-Star purchase, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of this skid loader.
I'll second it.
Right, I mean, Mike is usually very conservative of equipment that he gets, and makes sure it meets its purpose, is he comfortable that we're getting a good trade-in cost for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Coming in under budget?
He, uh, and, and he would not have brought it to me if he wasn't comfortable.
Right, no, I trust his judgment on that. I, we have a, a motion in a second to approve purchase of the, uh, new skid loader and trade-in of the old one, if there are questions, we'll vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, Mike can go get his new toy. Okay, we have.
It's, it could al- almost be a birthday present.
It is, you're right. Uh, we have a change.
Just make sure he leaves it here.
From E C I Construction, regarding a new facility here.
We, we have one lingering change order from the building, from E C I, um, and what this is for is for the temporary H V A C electric, for this building. And what this is for, E C I, the general contractor was responsible for providing temporary heat and so forth, but if you recall, everything got, kind of got put on hold because of the electrical panel.
Yeah.
That we had to wait on, which is an item under the electrical contractor, that's not an item that was held up by the general contractor. Uh, but they had to carry that on, um, I, I recommend that we pay it, uh, because it was not the general contractor's responsibility. But that we go back then to the electrical contractor and seek reimbursement.
I'm sorry, we, we pay the electrical contractor for it, even, but even. I'm sorry, we, we pay the electrical contractor for it, even, but even.
No, this would be to reimburse the E C I Construction, which is the general contractor.
Yeah.
Who had the responsibility, but the reason for these additional costs is because of the delay in the electrical panel.
Okay.
Not anything to do with the general contractor. So they already have all the equipment and everything on site. We needed to keep heat in the building.
Yes.
So that's what these additional charges are for electricity as well as the, uh, generator rental.
Gotcha. Okay. Actually, we ended up using a different, um, company entirely because we can get it from that one, correct?
No, just the supplier. We, we use the same electrical contractor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I meant the, the company that was providing the, the electric.
Distribution center.
Yeah.
The, the one they used, I believe, is up around Mechanicsburg.
Cause they, they had us waiting on that thing for, what, six months?
Four to five months. They ended up finding, the one we did get ended up coming out of Birmingham, Alabama.
Okay.
Instead of Harrisburg.
All right. Um, make a motion to approve change order thirty-seven, the amount of six thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars to E C I Construction.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve change order number, um, thirty-seven for E C I Construction. No further questions? I'll ask for the vote.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. We have approved payment of, uh, that change order. I guess we have a request for large-scale open burn.
Yeah, this is for, uh, Silverman Property at twenty-five thirty-one Stelt's Road. I did go down and, and inspect the, uh, burn pile. Make sure there were no foreign materials or, um, plastic materials or, or hazardous materials. And it, and it is strictly solely, um, wood materials, trees, shrubs.
Sounds good.
And, uh, so anything that's a large scale requires the board's.
Of course.
Approval.
And what is that foot diameter?
Twenty feet.
Anything over twenty feet?
Twenty square feet?
I, I think it's.
Diameter, I think.
Yeah, I, I think it's a diameter, just going straight through.
Okay.
This, this one's probably about thirty-five feet.
Any, any concerns from the, uh, the fire department?
Stelt's Road, no concern here.
I, I don't know if he reached out to Rose yet, but he said he was going to.
Okay.
It definitely, it's, it's well out. It's definitely far away from any buildings and so forth, but he told me he was gonna reach out, cause just for his own comfort. Um, he'd like to have someone there.
Yeah.
What's that?
Five, twenty-five, twenty.
An- anything over twenty by twenty?
Yeah, it, it, I, our ordinance is written twenty-foot diameter. Yeah, that's how our ordinance is written, but, um, thi- this is a pretty, pretty big pile, um, probably.
He's been saving these trees for a while.
Two stories high.
Two stories.
When we approve that, it requires them to report to the fire company when they're.
Well, they have to call in the nine eleven anyhow.
Right, yeah. And with their large scale, we require them to reach out to the fire department. But he's already aware of that, and he, he already told me he planned to do that, so.
Good. Uh, I make a motion to approve large-scale burn permit for two-five-three-one Stelt's Road. Get the man a match.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the large-scale burn. No questions? I'll ask for the vote.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. The burn is approved. We have three requests for stormwater operation and maintenance agreements. I believe these are standard agreements, so I think we can do them all in one motion.
Make a motion to approve Bowser Road, Thane Court, and twenty-two Kinney Sunset Drive stormwater operation and maintenance agreements.
Second.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second to approve three stormwater operation and maintenance agreements. If there are no questions from the board on those, we shall vote.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. Those three agreements are approved. And we have one development right verification, Todd.
Yeah, this is for, uh, thirteen-five-sixty-three Engle Road. Property owner, Shadmanfsky. Um, it's approximately forty, I think forty-one, forty-three acres. Uh, we did trace everything back to November tenth of seventy-six. There were no adverse conveyances, so they do have four development rights. Uh, one must stay with the property, then that leaves them three to either use to subdivide or sell to the seedy district. Uh, I can tell you in this particular case, they're looking to subdivide.
Okay.
Along the road. But that, that we'll see later, coming months.
A, uh, un- unrelated, but a question. After we have the, uh, developmental, transferable developmental right agreement researched, is there a timeframe on that or, uh, that, that, uh, obviously they don't lose the developmental right, but is there a timeframe that that, that research is good for?
It, it's good forever because what happens is the board approves it tonight, the chair will sign it, the property owner sign it, and then we actually record it to the recorded deeds office.
And you can just go, go pull from there if you need to in the future.
So if they ever go to transfer development rights to another property or use them for, uh, subdivision, and a bit of time has passed, we still will do research just to make sure nothing is transferred that we're unaware of.
All right.
It should all pass through the township here.
Very good. Uh, I make a motion to approve the, uh, developmental right verification agreement for one-three-five-six-three Engle Road.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the development right agreement. No questions from the board? We'll vote.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. The development right agreement is approved. We have some various correspondence, um, it's good to see there's another a hundred and twenty acres added to act preservation in the township. Brings it to a total of three thousand, two hundred and thirty acres to date, which is good. Uh, thank you letter from C S Davidson. You have the latest L G A C, um, newsletter. And you have, uh, a notification of the elective, elected official seminar. This is for Emergency Management Operations Center. I've been to it a couple of times. Stan is always there. They have a presentation, kind of goes through what happens and have a little hands-on demonstration. So if you've never been there, it's probably a useful thing to do. And, um, I think maybe just to clarify, I know you were scheduled coming up, Brad, on your, um, dinner. That's been postponed, I think.
Yes. So I was gonna bring that up, but, um.
Well, we're, we're closing public comments, so please. I brought that up because we had a question about it.
Brad Dobberman, Shrewsbury Borough. Um, last Friday, our past chief, John Cornadel, he was chief from nineteen eighty-five to two thousand one. A member for forty-eight years, passed away. So this weekend says services, and that's when we had our banquet scheduled, so. We postponed that. We're still working out details of the new date, but tentatively March sixteenth, but we gotta nail that down.
You said eighty-five to oh-one?
Yes.
Right.
I didn't see that, so I just.
He served from eighty-five to oh-one.
Yeah, and, well, as chief, but he was a member for forty-eight years. Um, and he was still active, helping out on committees, that type of thing. On a lighter note, um, last month, the county did approve the hundred percent real estate, uh, tax rebate, which will take effect next year, so.
Good.
That's good.
So that's a little, a little bit more meaningful than what typically townships or municipalities can do from a money standpoint.
Yes.
So.
Cause they charge more than eleven dollars.
That's good.
Well, hopefully that helps with, uh, some volunteer, uh, recruiting, what have you.
All right, so our last item is anybody wants, wish to address the board with any closing comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion for adjournment.
One.
We are adjourned.